Reece Campbell.
Here.
Tom Haglund.
Here.
Sue Kern.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
Chris Robinson.
Here.
All present, thank you, and will stand for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up tonight, we have the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Haglund. Any further discussion? Very none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, and the agenda is approved. We'll go right into district recognitions, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Larson.
All right, we have one recognition tonight, and that is congratulations to Nate Ekman for being selected the Class AAA Assistant Volleyball Coach of the Year by the Minnesota State High School League Volleyball Coaches Association. So congratulations to Nate.
Wonderful. Okay, and next up, we have public input. We have a smaller group here tonight, but if anyone wants to address us during this portion of tonight's meeting, we welcome your comments. Be reminded that we comply with Board Policy 206, and that we will enforce a three-minute limit on each person speaking. And please don't bring up any complaints or allegations against students or employees. As you may not discuss those due to data privacy, instead speak to Superintendent Larson after the meeting. And there will be no verbal interaction or question-answer with the Board of Education or superintendent of schools during this comment period. So is there anyone here who would like to speak to the board? Seeing none, okay, we'll proceed on to the next item, and that is building project updates. And we have several things. First, we're going to start with Tom and Bob Nystrom, Tom Haglund, I'm sorry, and Bob Nystrom, who were at the meeting of the Special Joint Meeting of the ISD 181 Board of Education in Brainerd City Council a couple weeks ago, and they're going to give a brief overview, and then we'll have some additional thoughts on that from other people.
Go ahead, sir. Okay. We had a joint meeting with city council representatives. It was a partial council that was there. It was David Bedeau, Jan Lampert, and...
Kelly Bevins.
Yeah, Kelly Bevins. And also, the city administrator was there. And, you know, I think it was a really good opportunity just to sort of clear the air with the city. They had some concerns, and I think they wanted those addressed, and they were able to do that in that format. And I think out of that, how I felt was, there was room for compromise. They have, I believe, four sites in Brainerd that will be either building new structures or remodeling, and their primary concern is parking and the demolition of houses. And so they just want to have more of a say in the process, and, but I thought it was very candid, and they were willing to compromise.
Yeah, I would echo that it was, you know, just a good, open dialogue. There was some confusion regarding their code. Thankfully, the city council had made a change. I forget now if it was back in January or February on the code. Actually, it's lightening for what's required for schools, so that's a nice thing for us, if you will. And although there was still confusion on the way that it was written in that, at least from interpretation, that we still would have to abide by the parking code. But they've relaxed that, which is a real benefit, I think. So we've got a follow-up meeting that's scheduled. I forget when it is, but sometime next week to have some further discussion with their team and see if we can't come to some slight changes, which I think we're even going to talk about tonight as well. So it was a very good meeting, and a nice field to work with our partners as well.
Do you want someone else to speak?
Director Kern was there too. Do you have anything you want to add?
No.
The only thing I would add is that last Monday, the city council had a meeting, and they kind of did the same thing that the two of you just did, and the sentiment seemed to be the same, which is really appreciative, that everybody's listening and being respectful, and we're trying to find compromise, so it's a win-win all the way around. And I felt really good about that conversation that they had at their city council, and the following night as well at the planning commission meeting. And so I'm actually looking forward to the meeting on the fourth, because I'm hoping that we can find some agreement there.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Bernard.
Yeah, thank you.
Many people did, so went to those meetings, Tom went to one of them.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think it'll be a benefit for both the city and for us, because we don't have to build as many parking lots as we thought we had to. Yeah, that's nice. Okay, next up, the final overview and approval recommendation of the design development for Nisswa Elementary School.
I think Chris is going to be there.
Chris is going to talk to him.
Okay, just Erica.
Chris, Justin, and Erica, okay, wonderful.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. I think we have this drawing in our packet, right?
Correct. So, four things we're really actually coming to you tonight for. The first one is the Nisswa Elementary Design Development Approval. So we'll proceed with that. Again, the floor plan is, you saw it, I believe, two weeks ago. Not a whole lot has changed, as described with that. I don't know, Erica, if you want to walk through any of that for them, or...
Did you walk through it last time?
We did.
I apologize, because I missed last meeting. Yeah, overall, nothing has changed on the layout of the plan. Basically, what we've been doing over the last two weeks is just taking the plan and further developing it. We moved into some further detailing and coordination with mechanical and electrical items that we could work on in the interim while you were reviewing it and looking for approval this evening. So, really, I guess if there aren't any questions, I won't walk through it again, since it was already walked through last time.
Yeah, and I don't know if this is a question for you, Erica, or a question for someone else, but we had some comments on the size of Nisswa, that it really already was a three-section school, and it's kind of staying that way. So, but we do have lots of additions here. So how many rooms are we actually, how many classrooms are we actually adding to the current plan? And then those two that were not, the two, where would they be?
They would be right there.
Yeah, those two, is that part of an alternate bid, or not? It is part of an alternate bid.
Correct.
Okay, so if we come in under, we might actually have two additional.
So what we have right now in the plan as it stands, in front of you, we have three sections per grade.
Okay.
K through four, and then we have two early childhood classrooms, along with the K-Club Room, which is just over by the cafeteria, right here. Yep. And then, we also have built into the plan two flex classrooms, so that when we have a blip in the enrollment, those classrooms are going to be available then for whatever grades need them. And we've located one over in, right there, one in the kindergarten/early childhood wing, and then we also located one, right there, over by the first through second, or first through fourth grade wing, because first and second is on the main level, and third and fourth is on the second level. So that classroom would be available for those grades, as well as the other flex classroom on the south side of the building, if needed, for those grade levels. And then likewise, as you just mentioned, Ruth, that there is an alternate that, to look at adding two additional classrooms on the main level, just to the east of the gym. And so depending on how bids come in...
We might do that right away, or otherwise it would be something, if those flex rooms fill up, then we have time to...
Correct. It's designed out, and you would have the cost for it being bid at that date.
Okay.
Obviously, if it was constructed a few years later, there would be inflation to factor in, but overall, you would have an idea, a general idea of the cost of that addition.
So Nisswa, and it has an enlarged cafeteria, enlarged gym, so it could easily go to a four-section school.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, I think that will satisfy those people that were concerned about that. Any other questions on this?
So this is just the existing site plan, just for your reference of how it's laid out right now. Obviously, it doesn't show the addition. This is the current site plan, as we discussed at the last project oversight meeting. So a couple of things here. The parking will predominantly be as an alternate, probably two alternates, so that we can capture the cost for the west and the east parking lots. But we will likely have some restriping in the base bid of this area just to create some more room for traffic. And this portion's being developed a little bit further from this plan as well, and will be discussed at a future project oversight meeting, but we just wanted to get this in front of you, that this is the general idea of what we're trying to accomplish.
I had someone bring up to me about the road and the parking on the east side of Nisswa Elementary School, wondering why the road had to go that far with three entrances and exits. If we did have parking on the east side, why it had to go all the way back to the end of our property? Did it need to be that big?
So that is something that we have met with the city. We didn't, I guess, get into specifics that day about the length of the bituminous that we would be looking to, you know, pave that road with. I'll make a note of it, too. We can further discuss that as we proceed forward with the city.
Because, yeah, right now, it kind of looks like a road that goes to nowhere, really.
Right. There is a driveway, though, right? You can see, just below the word "proposed", there's a couple of driveways located there. So really, you're not going much further than those two driveways, you know, past those. But we can have further discussions with the city as...
So those aren't exits? That's not an exit to a road?
No, those are driveways. Yep, there's three driveways along that...
How about the one on the northeast side, then? Is that the same thing?
Yes, no, right here, right there.
Yes.
Yep, that's a driveway as well. Those are the three driveways to the residences on that side of the school. And then obviously, to the north, there is your connection to the Main Street, Lakers Lane.
Okay. So the driveway, so right now, they don't have any paving?
Correct. It's all Class V. But as I have, we've had discussions with the city, and if the school district is going to look to have, continue to have parking on that side of the road, or on that side of the school, the city will require it to be paved.
But, and for us, we would want to cut it off right here.
Well, I think that's where, I think, I'll check into it further, but I believe we'd have to at least go down to where the other two driveways are, below the word "proposed" there. So like I said, there isn't much past that on the south end in addition to what would already be required, but we can clarify that.
Okay. Doesn't seem like we should have to pay for that extension of that road, past our parking lot.
Oh.
But that's my thought.
Well, the school district owns that street. That's why they're requiring you... Right now, you have an easement. Those people that own property to the east of that, they have an easement to gain access to their property.
Okay, we can talk about it later, but even though we own it, then we really don't need to pave it. So anyway. Okay.
Again, these are the elevations of the projects, with the building imagery on the backside east, where that road that we were just discussing exists, and then the main entrance. Just, I don't know if you want to speak to schedule.
Yeah. So... All right. Move this over. So here's the updated schedule. So after the day, we're intending on moving forward with construction documents, and that's the final design, with that ending on February 7th, having that in our possession. And then, and all for bids, and right after that. And that'll tie nicely with our spring start, summer start, so construction, the additions, we're intending on starting June 3rd. So here's the budget. This is our overall base bid sheet. Our final estimate is $8,869,396. And keep in mind, this is very conceptual in mind. You know, it's pre-bid, but, you know, our conceptual budget is tracking very well. We're a little under budget, as you can see. I also itemized out the alternates, four alternates. The first one is, the first two are the east and the west upgrades. As they stand right now, I know they're kind of evolving right now, but the east parking lots, we're about $117,000. The west parking lot, just shy of $43,000. And we have an alternate to upgrade the roofing system to a fully adhered EPDM in lieu of ballasted. We're at right at $40,000. And the library, we're looking at possibly reshingling that. That's at $15,000.
Where are the two extra classrooms?
So when this is put together, we really do not have complete design to put much pricing to. We're in the process of getting that, and we'll be able to get that identified to you real soon. Yeah, real soon.
But that would be alternate number five.
That would be alternate number five, correct.
I thought we, around 2005, we installed a new HVAC. Can you use that, or...
We're actually using a lot of the branch ductwork in some of the units, so we're trying to keep and preserve as much as we can. Obviously, with the classroom reconfiguration, we're going to have to cut some of that off and redo some of it, but for the most part, we're trying to reuse as much as possible, so it's not wasted work.
Okay. Also, I liked how you put Nisswa School where it reads across. I'm just looking at...
I'll address that.
Is that going to change?
I'll address that.
Okay. Okay.
Any additional questions on the budget here, or schedule?
So you said the start of construction would be June?
Early June.
After school.
Yeah, after school, so that's the intent.
Completion would be...
Well, the summer following would be the renovations.
2020.
2020, mid-August, yeah.
So will people need to move out of their rooms and things this summer, or will it be the second summer that...
It would be the second summer, yeah.
So we'll be doing new space the first?
Correct, yep.
Great.
I believe you have an action item later in the agenda for approving design development for this. We'll move on to Harrison, schematic design. Again, I don't know that the floor plans have changed a whole lot since you last saw this in schematic design, but this is our first viewing for design development. Erica, I don't know if you want to walk us through that?
Yep. All right, so this is your... All right, so this is the lower level of the Harrison Building. And this portion of the building, we have what we refer to as the sped suite. There are multiple spaces in there, Level 1, Level 2. We have a Level 3 area as well, where I'm pointing right now. We have reset rooms, some title rooms, and various special ed spaces in this area, along with amenities, such as your toilet rooms, and another office area off in this area. On this, in this area of the school, mainly the existing portion of the building, is what we retained or tried to remain as general education classrooms. And so on this lower level, can't even, I'm going to have to get my plan out. I can't read that. Just a second here. On the lower level, we have second grade. And so these three classrooms are second grade. And then on this lower level, much like all the other schools, we have a flex classroom. And so the flex classroom is on this lower level, but that will service any grade level that needs to have that when there's, again, a blip in the enrollment. Each classroom or learning community is surrounding then a learning commons. You'll see that as we go through each of the levels. As well as, then outside of the learning community are their locker bay areas. So that's what's designated here. The one difference in the special ed suite that you'll see is we did incorporate the lockers within, just due to the needs and the utilization of that area, and that worked best for servicing those children as well. In the center on each floor, you'll see toilet facilities. And there's some rework that will happen with an existing stairway here to gain, to gain access to the various levels up and down. Obviously, on this level going up. As well as, there's another stairway here off on the north end of the school. In this area, you can see a brand-new elevator. We have some additional spaces over in this area. This is all existing, lower-level area. You actually go down another level, and that's where there's mechanical spaces, as well as some additional storage IT closet area. We've had a meeting with District IT and made sure that we have coverage for all of the IT needs. And then we have, on the, I can go ahead and switch to them. Then on the main level, as we've discussed previously to date when we presented the schematic design drawings, we've relocated the main entrance to the north side of this building. So right here is where you'll be coming, gaining access into the building. And then that, as we've discussed in the past, has, it's a controlled entrance. And so you'll see entering into that vestibule, controlled entrance. You'll get buzzed into the main admin reception area in this area of the building. We have some offices and workroom area throughout. So this is mainly the admin area. And then, as you come into the building through these doors or through this door, you'll see that there's an elevator, a set of stairs. Again, that building is a split, what I would refer to as kind of a split level, multi-level school. And so you'll have stairs that then bring you up a half-story to what then, while this portion is all on, well, except for that stage area, this area is all on grade. And then the remainder of that classroom addition, or classroom, the existing portion of the building is the classroom area, and that's the half-story above. And so, again, as I mentioned, on the lower level, this area of the building has, you'll have kindergarten classrooms here, first-grade classrooms across the north side. Both areas have their own learning commons, and you'll see. The kindergarten one is slightly smaller, and that's just because of the nature or the size of their existing, their classrooms themselves, because they are smaller, are smaller. The commons area is smaller because their classrooms are larger, and that, again, works best for that grade level. Again, toilet facilities, locker bays outside of each learning commons here and here. And then, this is the existing set of stairs that is initially, or was the existing main entrance. That will just remain exiting, for exiting purposes. The stairway will remain in place, though, because then that allows access into the existing gym, which is now being converted into the cafeteria then. And will be multipurpose, because it could be used for concerts or events as well, since the stage is still going to be in that space as well. This portion of the building, while a part of it is existing, the remainder of it is addition, and that houses the brand-new kitchen area, kitchen serving area. The back area here that you see is receiving, and that will tie nicely to an access off of Oak Street. And then the remainder of that addition on the main level is gym space, and with, along with office, storage, and some electrical custodial space. The one thing that we're not showing yet on this plan is there is an alternate that will be incorporated at this school. And that's where, what that alternate will be is, there'll be an addition off to the north end of this gym. This, while this is a new gym, it's just a one-station gym. And by adding that addition, that will allow for that gym to become a two-station, full-size, then competition court in the north-south direction, should the bids come in favorable. All right. On the upper level, again, similar on the classroom portion of the building, you have your grades three and four. And likewise, surrounded by, your classrooms are surrounded by learning commons? Or your learning commons is surrounded by classrooms, sorry. And then you've got your toilet facilities, your locker bays outside again. What's occurring in the addition area of the building is you'll see a media center off on the north side. That'll be a nice, open area. When we look at the renderings, you'll be able to see what that looks like from the exterior, as well as then, we have an art-science tech space, some additional sped space on this level, along with then, conference, and I have to remember what that last space is. We did some shifting, so that's why, a bookroom. So the bookroom and the conference room originally were on the main level. But again, because of tightening the footprint of that floor plan, we look to bring those up to the upper level. And so that worked nicely in revising the upper level as well. One thing, I guess I didn't point out, if you could flip back to the main level, forgot to mention that this center space here, ignore this line. That's just, as we're working through drawings, we'll have to get that cleared up. But there's not a wall or a line there. This is all one area, and that's music, which works nicely at that level, because then it can service both the upper and the lower level. So I guess that, okay, and then site-wise, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the site we're showing prior to the meeting last Tuesday, this was the plan, that we were going to be building parking on the west side of the site, well as putting all the green space on the east side. Bus drop-off would have been off of Norwood as well, and then parent drop-off along with special ed busing would have been off 15th there. Requested project oversight, we've been studying this with WSN. And this is still in the works, I'd say, but we basically are not going to put any parking over on this side of the building anymore. Drop-off and special ed busing, while it looks a little bit different, is still along that same road. But we're moving the parking over here, and there's an option that we're looking at of stretching this out and moving it here, just so we have a buffer between the play area and the playground, between the parking lot and that area as well. Bus drop-off would exist off of Norwood, as it did before. But the main entrance would still be located here with kids and visitors allowed to come in through this entrance during the day if need be, but they'd have access to the play areas here. Again, moving this parking lot down will actually provide a clearer path that they don't have to walk around a fenced area or a paved area. And that's still in the works, hence this is still a draft. But just wanted to give you a snapshot of where this has been heading. Again, nothing's been decided yet in terms of how this will ultimately lay out, but this is the current site plan as it exists right now.
Can you share how many parking spots we were at versus how many we're now?
We were at 40 before, and we're still remaining at 40 right now.
Yeah, there was an earlier version of this, I think, where we had added 20 more spots, but we...
That we had, yeah.
Yeah. We pulled that down to the 40 that we originally had on the west.
So that special ed area two down on the south corner still has that entrance there for that?
Correct. So that sidewalk that goes out of the round area of the building, that still exists, and that's why it was chosen, because special ed is down on that level. They have access in and out fairly easily.
So Chris, with this plan, 15th Street would not be vacant, or we wouldn't ask for that?
There never was an intent to vacate the street. It was to just create a one-way. And we, right now, are still entertaining that. That's what we would be looking, at least, I guess, upon further discussion with the project oversight committee. That's what we've been looking at, still proposing. I guess, upon further discussion with the Project Oversight Committee, um, that's what we've been looking at, still proposing.
So we're vacating?
Sixteenth would be the,
Correct.
The main one that gets vacated.
Yep.
Mainly, 'cause there's a number of properties.
So it stays the same, it just moves over?
It, it gets skinny in the north-south direction and widened in the east-west.
So if you incorporate this plan, uh, to the west, there would be four less houses that would be taken?
Correct.
Okay.
And it still efficiently lays out the site nicely, um, after we've done some revisions and looked at, in lieu of getting, in lieu of not taking the two northeast properties, it allowed us more area not so broken up, um, to allow for that playground area to be in one, um, monitorable area, um, 'cause that was a concern initially with, when we were starting to look at northeast potentially not being purchased, it started breaking that site up, um, more, and it wasn't quite ideal for layout.
So, the forty spots, that will allow for parking for most of our staff, but not all of our staff. Is that correct? So visitors will still be parking on the street and some of our staff.
I think this is a really nice example of some of the work that came out of the joint meeting that we had with the City of Brainerd, that they asked us to look, to see if there were any ways that we could find some compromise, and, um, we were asked, just, could, could we look to see if there was a way of doing it? And this is kind of our first draft at doing that, but we're actually liking, um, the change and how the synergy is working, um, in this. And so it'll be fun to see when it, when it gets a little more drawn even. So.
So the property we purchased, oh, I'm sorry, uh, that's on Oak Street, takes up that whole stormwater area then? That's where that butts up to there?
Comes up to about here, Reed.
To about there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just go back to the main floor plan, just for clarity purposes on the gym. If we were to expand as that alternate, it wouldn't be a full-size gym, because that wall was going to be a permanent with a couple of openings?
Uh, no, on this building, we were looking to have that be movable. So, um, you know, if, if there was, if the bids weren't favorable and we, and the alternate couldn't be chosen at this time, um, that wall would be set up for potentially a future expansion, um, so it could be relocated.
But with, you mean a, a complete teardown on the wall, or just with openings, you mean?
No, it would be relocated. It, because it's precast, it could be relocated. Um, tho, the building that we were entertaining, just doing the openings, was Baxter Elementary.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
I would like to talk about that same drawing. Because it was my understanding, and, and I think when I spoke with Chris, you're still looking to see if there isn't some way that we can get a full-size gym in this.
We'll rerun the numbers once we have the site nailed down. Um, again, we've been running numbers and the site's a little changing, so I'm not saying that it's in the budget right now. Again, it's an alternate, but we'll, uh, continue to monitor that, um, to determine whether it can be ultimately based bid or if it still has to be an alternate to protect the budget. Yes.
Yeah, 'cause even tonight, when you went through it again, and I've heard this many, many times, but even the spaces right to the south of the gymnasium, could some of that be moved to that spare room downstairs so that we could add some additional length to get a full-size gymnasium? I just would really like to see a full-size gymnasium at Harrison.
Understand. Um, those spaces are tied to the gym, uh, well, except for the, um, electrical custodial. Those services need to come in at the main level, and so, um, that is a primary location for providing services into the building. Um, the space to the, uh, adjacent to, yep, right there, that's storage for the gym, so you wouldn't wanna bring that to the other level. And, uh, the space next to it is the PE office, which, again, so those are spaces that need to be in proximity, but we'll continue to look at the plan to see, yep. All right, so as I know, there were questions about, um, the exterior on Harrison and specifically the text. Um, we did have, uh, an interior slash exterior standards meeting, um, a couple of Fridays ago. And in that, the discussion was, um, the directive was that we, the district would prefer to have, uh, text specific to the building name, uh, reading right to left. And so, uh, we will get that changed. The other, uh, the rest of this rendering just, um, shows you the com- composition of the exterior. Um, the, the space off, sorry. This area obviously is the existing portion of the building, and, um, the remainder of this is the addition. And so you can see here on the lower level, that's where the admin, um, office spaces are. The space that I was referencing on the upper level, the media center, that's the space. And so, um, it has some very nice views. Um, the design intent is to make it feel like you're up in the treetops, and so to gain access with some views out of that glazing. There's obviously, as, as we continue to further develop all of the building's exterior, uh, composition, we'll, we'll, we're looking and meeting with the district on, uh, creating some unified identity for the exterior. And so, we, at last meeting, we spoke about, um, you know, utilizing the Brainerd Warrior blue color and having an element of a canopy, a covered entrance at all of the, um, buildings. And so we are working on that as we speak, and, uh, we have a meeting this Friday in which we'll be reviewing with that group some additional ideas and get feedback at that, and gain some feedback at that meeting, so. The, that's, there's changes in the works, and, uh, next time we review these with you, we'll have some other ideas.
So Harrison's schedule, uh, again, we're tracking, we're in front of you, uh, today. Uh, for the initial, uh, look at the design development, uh, we'll be coming back in two weeks, and some of the things that have been talked about will be developed further, uh, for final review and approval of DD, uh, on the tenth. Um, so we, we'll be looking to come back in two weeks for that. Again, this'll start construction, very similar to what we talked about at Nisswa. And similar to Nisswa, the addition will start first at Harrison as well. So the remodel work will really be slated for the second summer and possibly part of the school year, depending on how we can flex some classrooms in the new addition and therefore, so. Uh, we've run an estimate, uh, for DD on this one as well, and we're currently tracking, uh, slightly under budget. Again, with the site somewhat in flex, uh, I'll just say this is a snapshot of where we're at right now. We'll continue to monitor that, obviously, and hope to learn more within the next week so we can really start to nail down the site and harden up these numbers. But we, we're carrying a couple thoughts of alternates right now. I don't know that these are necessarily decided upon, but we'll have those for you at the, in two weeks as well. Any questions? And just wanted to give you an update on Baxter. I don't believe we're coming for initial review of this, uh, project until the tenth. Um, so there's a little bit of work yet to happen on this project. Uh, but the floor plan, as you've been seeing it in previous presentations, really hasn't changed a lot. What's going to change ultimately is when we nail down the site, and we hope to do that within the next two weeks as well, so that at the initial, we've got a pretty good idea where the building's actually gonna be located, and moving forward with that design. Again, there's an upper level of classrooms with this housed around Learning Commons, much like the other two projects as well. So again, these are just site studies right now, and nothing's been decided, but these are based off some early meetings we've had with the City of Baxter, uh, with some options for bus drop-off pickup, as well as parent drop-off pickup, and some parking. Um, I believe both options show a hundred and sixty parking spots in the main parking lot. Um, this one shows a drop-off lane around the outside of it, uh, for parents, and then bus drop-off lane separate from that. The second study that's been done is creating three separate zones, uh, one for parent drop-off only, so they drive in and out for that. You'd have your separate parking lot, and then you'd have the bus drop-off and pickup as well. And again, these are studies to, to inform where the building ultimately gets sited, and we're continuing to meet with the city, uh, weekly on that, so.
And Chris, the direction is, it looks like it's still gonna be that Jasperwood, uh, extension?
Possibly somewhere off of there. I don't think that's changed based off of that early meeting. Where, off of that, that's really what's kind of in flux. We wanna make the minimum impact of the site, and that's what's really trying to be determined, you know?
But you'll be doing your tours with the people that have asked to walk it with you,
We plan to do that.
Prior to the tenth of December?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Schedule, just to give you an idea where we're at with that, so again, the tenth, uh, we'll be coming for the initial, uh, design development with the site and the building at that time, and then plan for that special board meeting on the nineteenth, um, for possible final review of that and acceptance. And then summer start again with this one as well. Again, kind of a empty site. Obviously, there's some tree clearing that needs to happen, but, uh, this is a little bit different than the other ones, as we're building a brand-new building and site improvements. And then lastly, we just wanted to give you a snapshot of where the high school's at. There's a lot of input that's happened over the last month, month and a half. Uh, there's a little bit more happening this week, and then some pretty significant changes will be happening on some of the areas of the building that we'll bring forward on the tenth as well. But the pool, for the most part, that's, that's one part of the building, I would say, is fairly well-figured out. There's a little adjustment that's gonna happen here with the locker rooms and office locations, but that group's fairly satisfied with the way that is shaping up there. Um, one thing to note, where the pool, the existing pool is, um, we're actually gonna put some health classrooms underneath, as well as some storage, um, and then utilize some of that space that's existing underneath the pool, uh, so we don't necessarily have to fill the entire basin in, uh, for the use of it above.
And if I could just add, uh, those health classrooms would be looked at as multipurpose use, um, because, um, then not only during the day would they be used for classrooms, but then, um, after school, um, they could be used as team meeting spaces. Um, that's one of the needs, um, that, uh, the high school has with having, um, you know, uh, a, a male coach teaching or coaching, uh, a female sport, um, or vice versa. And so, um, because of just the way the lockers are configured, that was a, a request per that, per the staff and coaching, um, team, so.
Uh, the main level, again, building's pretty big north to south, so we have to break it up. But, again, this is that pool area, uh, that new gym station with some additional locker spaces, uh, is located in this zone of the building. I know that's being studied further right now. This portion of the building was,
There might be another no, location for that, correct? That would work better with the building?
Configuration or location along that side of the building, yes, that we're currently looking at, based on feedback we received at the last meeting. CTE, again, is in this zone of the building. Um, that's probably gonna have the most significant change from what you're seeing here. And again, that's based on the two rounds of tours we've done and a couple of follow-up meetings, so. Uh, received a lot of good feedback, and there's some synergies forming in the design that'll be reflected in an update in two weeks. Um, and then, again, the performing arts and the additional classroom spaces, uh, music, and then general, uh, general ed classrooms, uh, located along the north side of the building, with the upper level also reflecting that as well.
And we actually have a performing arts, uh, user group meetings tomorrow, and so we'll glean some additional information. They'll see the revised plans, we'll get some feedback, and we'll go back and refine those plans and have them ready to present at, uh, the December tenth board meeting.
Any additional comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's exciting stuff. See things starting to happen. So I think we went through all of our building project update, and we're ready to go on to approval of minutes. So we have the regular board meeting on November twelfth.
So moved to approve the regular board meeting from November twelfth?
Thank you, Director Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Director Kern. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then we have the consent calendar.
So moved.
Thank you, Director Haglund.
Second.
Thank you, Director Nystrom. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we have no site reports or communications, so go on to new business. And the first action item is Policy 110 Service Animals, and this will be our final reading of that policy.
And this policy has not changed at all since the last two readings, so it's exactly as we had discussed.
Moved to approve the third and final reading of Policy 110?
Thank you, Director Haglund.
Second.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then we have the final approval of the design development of Nisswa Elementary School. That we just heard about a little bit earlier.
I would so move to approve.
Thank you, Director Kern.
Second.
Thank you, Director Nystrom. Any just further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Yay, our first.
Sorry, Bob.
The first approval of a, that's exciting. Okay, and then we have approval of the annual board book subscription, and that's for twenty-one hundred dollars. Superintendent Larson's just gonna briefly review that.
This is just to review the board book, uh, program that we use, uh, for all of our board meetings, and so I would recommend that the board approve it for another year.
So moved.
Thank you, Director Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Director Kern. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we have three resolutions, and I'm gonna have Marcy Lord and Greg Crow come forward. Thank you. The first one is, um, ratifying the award of the sale determining, authorizing the exec, equi, ex, oh, sorry, execution, delivery, and registration and providing for payment of general obligation taxable open refunding bond, Series 2018B. And I'm gonna let Greg do all the talking.
Okay. Hi, everyone, it's nice to be back. If you remember, we kinda walked through the, the goal of these three bond issues last month when I was here, uh, for the pre-sale reports, and, um, the punchline for all the bond sales is that we basically got results pretty close to what we projected, uh, at that meeting. So, um, I know we had you adopt a revised parameters resolution. We were concerned that interest rates were, were rising, and because of the structure of the, um, election voter-approved bonds, we needed to make sure we went ahead with the 2018C refunding to balance out the tax levies we talked about. Ultimately, over the last couple of weeks, rates moderated a little bit, came down, uh, and we ended up landing pretty close to where we expected, uh, when we did the pre-sale reports. So, um, uh, met the parameters that you originally adopted at the first meeting. So, that's kind of the big picture. Um, we can walk through, you do have three resolutions and three, we have, uh, sale day reports for each of the, uh, resolutions, kind of summarizing the, um, results of the bidding, and we'll walk through those, and the resolutions themselves are template resolutions, so there are some blanks still. We'll have those filled in with the information that's in the reports, um, when you, uh, certify the minutes for this meeting at your next meeting. So, let's look at the 2018B, which is the taxable OPEB refunding. If you remember, this was simply for level savings. There was no restructuring, uh, related to the new bond issue. The only, uh, the benefit we were looking for was reduced, uh, tax levies on a consistent year-to-year basis for this, for this one. So, uh, if you turn to the, um, actually, if you look at the first page, you'll notice, and, uh, uh, we had some astute minds notice this right away, that we issued fourteen-point-two million dollars of bonds, and if you remember, um, oh, that's the D, sorry. We'll get on the right one here. So the B is nine-point-two-nine million dollars, and, um, I'll get to the astute minds when we get to the D, but, um, on the on the B bonds, we had five bids, and I should mention, you see the rating noted on page, on the first page of the report, S&amp;P did affirm the school district's A rating. We had told them in advance about the future bond issues that were coming up as part of the package when we got the rating on the voter-approved bond. So they did affirm that A rating. You also went to market with the AAA credit enhanced rating because the state's rating was upgraded, so these were sold as AAA credit enhanced, single A underlying rating bonds. You did get five bids, the low bidder was Northland Securities from Minneapolis with an interest rate of 3.22%. If you look at the italicized note, basically, when we did our pre-sale sizing, we assumed a premium. In other words, that you would get bids for more than your bonds were selling for, and we did get a small premium, and it's a little bit larger than we had projected. So we were planning to sell $9.4 million of bonds, we actually only needed to sell $9.29 million because we can use some of the premium to pay off the old bonds. So you had to issue a little bit less debt to pay off the old bonds as you're, as you're doing this refinancing. As you can see in the note, the true interest cost at 3.22 is a little bit lower than the 3.36 we had in the pre-sale report that we talked about in October. So the total savings is about $45,000 higher, $350,000 roughly compared with $305,000 in the pre-sale report, and $323,000 on a present value basis, and both of those, the percentage and the present value were better savings than the minimum 200,002% that was in that resolution. So on November 14th, the school board chair and director of business services actually signed the acceptance of the low bid per the authorization that you gave them in October at that meeting. So tonight's action now is to ratify that award, but basically, the bid award has been made, you're simply ratifying that it was done. Okay?
Okay.
So, quick look at the attachments. You see the five bidders on attachments, page one. Mostly regional, Northland out of Minneapolis, Baird from Milwaukee, Piper Jaffrey from Minneapolis, Fifth Third from Cincinnati, and Steve Olniklis from Memphis, Tennessee. There are some schedules. If you jump to page three, you can, just as a reminder, the average interest rate on the old bonds was 4.9%. Page four, you see that it's 3.2%. You'll see that these rates are a little higher than the next bond issue because these are taxable bonds. And so then you see on page five, the total savings of $348,374. And then on page six, we show that you'll have that money in the bank for a couple of months here, and you can use the $28,000 we expect that you'll earn to help pay off the old bonds as well. And then page seven and later are the rating report. If you took the opportunity to read it in June and stayed awake through the whole thing, it's pretty close to the same report, but just highlighting that not much has changed since June, so we've attached that, just to this one as well to save a little bit of paper. Do you want to go through the other two reports, or do you want to act on the resolution?
I think we should act on this one first. So the ratifying resolution is on page 43 or 44 of board book. Page 43, I believe, wasn't it 25?
I'm with the adoption of the resolution ratifying the award of the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration, and providing for the payment of general obligation taxable OPEB refunding bonds, series 2018B as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
So we have a first from Director Robinson, a second from Director Nystrom, and we'll call for a roll call. Oh, is there any further discussion?
Tom Haglund?
Yes.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Bob Nystrom?
Yes.
Chris Robinson?
Yes.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you. So we got that one done.
Okay, so we can, we can skim the highlights then on the, on the next one, which is also a refunding. So the, the difference primarily, if you remember, is this one, we were extending the payments to match the debt service schedule that we talked about with the voters during the election. So you're paying more interest because the bonds are longer, but you're paying at a lower interest rate, so there's some savings from that standpoint. We were looking for present value savings, in other words, kind of adjusted for interest over time, so another, the longer payments are costing you less because a dollar won't be worth the same out in the future. And so that's kind of why we set up the savings as a present value savings. Now, we did look into the previous refunding of these bonds, and you thought, we thought you might be interested to know that, these are the middle school bonds, and they were refinanced in 2010, and at that time, we actually reduced the total principal and interest by about $4.7 million. And so even though the restructuring is going to add a little bit of interest, you're still significantly below, you know, the total costs that the voters expected when they approved the middle school project originally. So, all that being said, there's a similar note in italics on, or same rating, about six bids, the low bidder being Citigroup. There's the same note on the premium in italics on the first page there. In this case, the premium was significantly larger, and you can see we downsized the size of the bonds from 22 million to 20.3 million. And so the premium itself was over $2 million for this particular issue. And part of that is because of the size of the issue, we also tend to see larger premiums on tax exempt versus the taxable issues, which was, the first issue was taxable. So in the note, the true interest cost at 2.85 is a little bit higher in this case than the 2.76 that we had in the, in the pre-sale report. So the present value savings went down from 427,950 to about $302,000, or about $125,000. And that 302 equals 1.32% of refunded debt service. So this savings is actually more than double the minimum savings you had in the parameters resolution of 115,000 and 0.5%. And as even, as I mentioned, greater than the original minimum savings in the original parameters resolution. You can see the bidders on attachments, page one and two. This is a larger bond issue, so it attracted more national interest. As I mentioned, Citigroup was the low bidder, Raymond James from Florida, Hutchinson Shockey from Chicago, Jeffries from New York, Baird from Milwaukee, and Bank of America out of their New York office. You look on page four, the old average interest rate, 4%, the new rate, as we mentioned, just under 3% on page five. Again, negative savings, in other words, higher total interest payments, but net present value benefit of over $300,000 because those future payments are discounted because of the value of, of a dollar. And, oh, you saw this chart, I didn't realize it print, didn't print, it's correct on the screen, if you can, is mine the only one that's bad? Do you guys all have this in your electronic version? Anyway, this is the same thing we looked at last month, where we kind of showed, okay, here's where we stand, and we're actually a little, little bit better because of the bid results compared to where we expected to be at the pre-sale.
And Ruth had asked, you know, there's still a gap there, because we do still have additional issues to do, so eventually we'll get filled in as we do more issues.
Any questions about that one?
Okay, so that ratifying resolution is, I picked the wrong one, on page 95 of board book.
I so moved for the resolution ratifying the award of the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration, and providing for the payment of general obligation school building refunding bonds on series 2018C as presented.
Thank you, Director Campbell.
Second. Or did you already do it? Sorry.
Director Kern? Okay. So we have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Kern. Any further questions? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Bob Nystrom?
Yes.
Chris Robinson?
Yes.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Tom Haglund?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. So that resolution is approved, and we'll go on to the third one.
Okay, we'll make this one even quicker. So this is, this is not a refunding. This is new money for the projects. Our goal was about $15 million of funding for project costs. You can see in the inside, four bids, same bond rating, a low bidder on this one was Raymond James. The low bid rate is 3.62%. You know what, in the italics, again, the pre, the premium was about three times as big as we expected, and we can use that for construction costs, so we lowered the bond size from 14.8 to 14.2 million. The true interest cost of 3.63 is almost exactly the same as the 3.64 that we had in the pre-sale report, and, which is below the 4% that was in the parameter. So on this one, the parameter was, if it's below 4%, then the board chair and director of business services are authorized to accept the bid, and so the rate's below 4%, so that was done on the 14th. The bids, same, similar group of, of bidders on page one and two and three, and page four is the sources and uses, page five is the debt service schedule, which just basically shows the ongoing payments at about $1.1 million a year, and then the last page is the schedule that shows our goal of, I think at the time was to use about 1.2 million or so of, of 1.25 of your annual LTFM revenue. We've used a little less than that, but the original plan had about 18.7 or 19 million of projects, so funded by this funding source, so this is one that we'll probably come back to in the next year or two, depending on how the project budget lands. But right now, you've got about 1.7 million a year after debt service for ongoing costs, and we'll allocate a little bit more of that down the road at some point. So, any questions about that one?
And this ratifying resolution is on page 147.
I think you said someone had spotted something about this, someone had spotted something in the paperwork on this one?
Oh, yeah.
You're going to tell us the punchline, so?
Just talking about the premium and, and the fact that it was so much higher than we had projected, so that was, that was a good catch in your board packet. It was really just kind of, was it a typo because it looks so big? And then we, but no, we did get a good premium, and that helps you reduce the bond size as noted in the, in the italics, so.
So that's the reason we have extra money in-
What's that?
That's the reason we have extra money in our LTFM? Yeah. Yeah, okay.
With the lower bond size, we're still able to finance 15 million.
Okay.
Thanks for the reminder, I don't want to leave you guys, you all hanging.
I'm with the adoption of a resolution ratifying the award of the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration, and providing for the payment of general obligation facilities maintenance bonds, series 2018D as presented.
Thank you, Director Robinson?
Second.
Thank you, Director Nystrom. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll do the roll call vote.
Second one's who?
Nystrom.
Yes.
Bob Nystrom?
Yes.
Chris Robinson?
Yes.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Tom Haglund?
Yes.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. So it's the final resolution, and you'll be back with us again in-
I'm sure I'll, yeah, so, I'll give you a couple of months off.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Greg, thanks, Marcy.
Thanks.
And Marcy, I guess you can stay up here.
Yes, I wasn't going anywhere.
Okay.
So in your packet is the financial report as of October, and I really have nothing to note. October was very comparable to last year. The percentages for each fund is a little bit different, but it's because of prior items that I've noted, you know, in the general fund, the improvements was because of roof, summer projects. In Fund Two, there were some repairs done, so it's all stuff that's been noted in previous month's reports. The only thing I wanted to bring up was, our audit is normally presented December 10th. Our auditors cannot make it to that meeting. We talked about possibly maybe the 19th at noon, is that, would that work for the board, or would you prefer it just to be in January? And I haven't confirmed with them if they can make it even, but it is an option.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any questions?
How's the audit going?
It's going. No, it's going fine. We're just wrapping up actually this week, so it's going good. As I had noted previously, you know, it's going to come in better than what we had talked about, so that's always good. So, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
All right, just a short one tonight, there's a lot of meetings, as I identified for the board in my memo last week, just to make sure that we had kind of an idea of what was going on between now and, and the new year, because there's a lot of really exciting things happening as proposed tonight, so, thank you, it makes these meetings very fun. One thing that I would like to bring up is, a week ago, last Friday, both Ruth and I were at the Crow Wing County Collaborative Meeting, and at that meeting, one of the things that we've been looking at really closely so that we can continue our services to, for children and families in our county, we've been looking at ways that we can may, potentially be more competitive with grants, or to look for additional funding sources as we move forward. And we've been really excited because Paul Drange has been sitting in and working with us a little bit through Sourcewell, and we've also had Dr. David Heidala, who has done research on the work that the collaborative is doing, and how we can better move forward to gain more, more additional revenue so that we can provide additional services to children. And one of the recommendations that we've talked in great deal and was approved at the meeting, at the, of the collaborative meeting, was we are going to try for one year to hire an executive director of the Crow Wing County Collaborative to help pull us all together, to lead us as a collaborative, to be searching and seeking grants. Our, the primary focus, however, is our county itself, however, if there are other counties in Region Five or school districts in Region Five that might make it that we would be, have more opportunity to be eligible for applications and such, that then we would have that opportunity, but it was clear from the board that they wanted us to put our primary focus on Crow Wing County and what kind of services we can provide for mental health, for our collaborative workers in our schools and so on, and so we're very excited about that. We think it's a great step forward. We did decide to take one year at a time, and to start with one year and see how it works. And so Jenny has helped us a little bit to develop a job description and to, to identify some of the highlights that we're looking for, so we're very excited about it. So I think it's going to keep us, just from past experiences that I've had with collaboratives, I think that it's a step in the right direction moving forward in this process.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, the reason we're looking for additional funding is each year, our fund balance is going, is going lower, and so eventually, we're going to need new funds, or we're going to have to cut collaborative workers, and at each meeting, there's a report on what they do for our families and our students, and it's pretty impressive, the work they do. So I don't think we want to go in that direction of cutting this fund, so we just need to find some new revenue, and I think Dr. Heidala will, will be, if, if he's the one, or whoever is the one, yeah, will, will do a great job. And so I've learned a lot being on this, this board, and we're now going to start, instead of meeting twice a year, we're going to meet four times a year.
of meeting twice a year, we're gonna meet four times a year, so I think that'll be good too. So, anyway, it's, um, they do excellent work and, um, I'm losing the name and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but the woman that does the report.
Becky Statham.
Thank you, Becky. I knew it was Becky. Becky Statham, um, she's just an amazing worker and, and some of the stories she tells us, that, that, some of them are heartbreaking, but what those collaborative workers can do, it's pretty impressive. So, um, it's an important part of our school district that we don't talk about very much.
Yep, thanks. Um, just a few other things that I would like to just remind everyone that, of the joint meeting with the, the city, Brainerd on the fourth, at six o'clock. And this time, it'll be held in City Hall. And so we will be meeting there and we're excited to continue our discussions. Uh, we have Principal Academy on December 5th and 6th over in Staples at Sourcewell. A few other things that I have on here, Paul Bunyan Education Co-op Executive Meeting on Friday the 7th. We'll have a regular meeting on the 10th and we are adding a special board meeting of the Board of Education on the 19th at 12 o'clock noon. And that is primarily the agenda that we will see on there. We'll be approving, uh, the final design development that we, that you saw tonight as far as, um, the new elementary school in Baxter. And we will be asking you to approve the schematic design of the high school.
Okay. I think it's the, isn't it the final design of Harrison?
Nope, that's the 10th.
Oh, that's the 10th?
That's the 10th.
Okay, so we'll be already on the Baxter on the 19th?
Yeah, it'll be the Baxter on the 19th.
Okay.
So, a lot of things going on. It's hard to keep track. That's kind of why I outlined it because it's like, hard to keep track which ones we're just going to have like a first look at, major look and then, uh, the approval. And then, I don't know, but pending what happens on the fourth, um, we'll be relooking at some of the property acquisition. You know, I don't know if they'll be coming to the table on the 10th or the 19th or not, any of the properties, uh, but we do need to continue to move forward to make sure that we can stay on schedule with our four-year schedule, um, that we've been working on. And so that ends my report.
Okay. I don't think I have anything to add to that except for that it's kinda scary to see the December 24th and 25th dates already on our agenda for district offices closed.
Yeah.
It's coming way too fast. Does anyone else have anything to come forward for? No? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. I get to do this.